Okay, it is six o'clock on April third, 2024. I'm going to declare the planning commission meeting to come to order. Have the roll call, please.
Here, Solomon. Vice Chair Benyon.
Here.
Commissioner Dahl.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss-Blaine.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Commissioner Sarver. Interim Public Services Director Sullivan. Speeches.
Here.
This time, we're going to take a poll for the next meeting, which will be April seventeenth. One, two, three, four. We have a quorum, and we'll meet next on April seventeenth. Nobody's signed up, nobody in the audience, public hearing. They'll all be continuing business. Oh. Chair will undertake a motion to approve the minutes. So moved? Moved, second. Corrections, additions. All those in favor say aye.
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 Ayes have it, the motion, the minutes passed. New business, periodic update growth alternatives. Jason?
All right, so I do have a PowerPoint, hopefully it will work with me. And if you see it flash and you need me to stop, just raise your hand and I'll stop because I'm watching it on my screen. So first we kind of, I want to go back and remind everybody the state and regional guidance we face. So this is a presentation related to our periodic update and both the kind of our three growth alternatives that we're evaluating as part of our comprehensive plan update in order to demonstrate compliance with the Growth Management Act. As we look at the state and regional guidance, we're kind of really guided by three larger entities. One is the Puget Sound Regional Council. And as we briefed earlier, it establishes regional geographies. And as part of those regional geographies, they establish growth targets for the regional geography, right? So PSRC doesn't establish a specific growth target for the city of Bonnie Lake. They establish a growth target for all the cities and towns within Pierce County. As a group, the cities and towns in Pierce County cannot exceed seven percent of the regions, seven percent of the growth assigned to Pierce County as a whole. So we all got together as a bunch of cities and worked with Pierce County to establish the growth target for the city of Bonnie Lake. The actual growth target was adopted by Pierce County, and we discussed that in the memo by Pierce County for the goal. In addition to that, there was an amendment to the Growth Management Act that specifically provided that the Washington State Department of Commerce was to provide growth targets for every city and town, basically that's required to comply with the growth management, for housing based on income band, and we'll get into it in more detail. You could kind of see those income bands that they were looking at in a totality, which is zero to thirty. PSHS and PSHS stands for permanent supportive, permanent supportive housing. Basically, you have to have assistance to live there. And this isn't just homeless shelters, this is domestic violence survivors, veterans, handicap, so it's not just homeless shelters, it's a, it's a wide range of housing that falls under that, that clean and sober housing. Those are all fall under that kind of umbrella of permanent supportive housing. And then zero to thirty percent non-supportive housing, thirty to fifty percent AMI, fifty to eighty, eighty to one twenty, and a hundred and twenty plus AMI. Those were the housing kind of income bands that they created. And then they assigned housing target numbers to each of those income bands. Those were then adopted by Pierce County. And we are required to demonstrate through our comprehensive planning efforts that we meet, A, the growth target and the, and the regional growth strategy that's coming out of the Vision 2050, plus also these income band targets that are coming out of the Washington State Department of Commerce. So when you strip away everybody else's and you focus just on the city, we have kind of three growth targets that we're looking at total. Population growth target, housing growth target, and employment growth target. I will say, other than this slide, we really don't talk about the population growth target because it really doesn't have a lot of bearing on some of the decisions that we have to make. It's really the housing target and also looking at how that impacts our employment target. So between 2020 and 2044, the city is required to add thirty eight, about thirty eight hundred people, thirty nine hundred people, which would bring our population in 2044 to twenty six, a little over twenty six thousand people. Our housing target was established at one thousand four hundred and fifty one new housing units, regardless of income band, between 2020 and 2044, bringing our total number of housing units in the city to a little over nine thousand. Our, our employment target was seventeen hundred, a little over seventeen hundred new jobs through the city for a total, for a total, you know, existing plus target of a little over eight thousand jobs. Because our comprehensive plan went out to 2049, we kind of just straight line projected those out for another five years based on the same growth rate. So it just assumes a straight line growth rate over that twenty five year window, which pushes the population a little over five thousand or twenty seven hundred housing units. Housing target of about night, little, little less than two thousand, and then employment of just a little over twenty one hundred. We don't have those numbers for the income band because the Commerce only assigned income banding for the 2044 horizon. And because depending on how everything does in the state, those can't be just projected out on a straight line because there are other requirement, other things that will come into play. So you can see here for all of those different housing needs, we need to have a hundred and eighty seven housing units for zero to thirty, and then two hundred and fifty thirty, two hundred and fifty three for the other zero to thirty. Thirty to fifty percent is two hundred and sixty nine housing units, fifty to eighty is two hundred and thirteen. Eighty to one hundred is ninety two, a hundred to one twenty is eighty three, and a hundred and twenty plus is three hundred and fifty four for fourteen hundred and fifty one housing units. So the total number change the same. But the big difference between this comprehensive plan update and the ones we've done in the past is we're not just looking at total income, total housing units, we have to look at them by income band. And that's the new wrinkle. So as we looked at our current comprehensive plan and our developing alternatives, we kind of looked back at the survey results that we got. And these were the, basically the answers we got to the survey questions from the survey that we ran this year. As you can see, there's kind of three groupings of priorities. The top three priorities was reducing traffic congestion, maintaining single family neighborhoods, and the ability to walk and bike. Those were kind of the top three priorities. So that was kind of in the background as we thought about these alternatives. We also looked at what does mine look like looking 2049? And we looked at this part of the survey, and it talked about slowing the growth, small town feel, less traffic, family oriented, walkable, safe community diversity, more, you know. So we looked at how these terms also impacted the way we developed our alternatives. We also during that survey asked what kind of housing options, homeownership options would people support in Bonnie Lake? And of course, unsurprisingly, single family came in number one. We didn't expect that not to be the case. What was interesting though is cottages, accessory dwelling units, townhomes, and attached single family were also supportive because they're all home ownership opportunities. But they provide housing capacity to other income bands, not just the traditional detached single family home. We also asked, where would you support residential growth? And as you can see, most of it was really clustered along the four ten corridor, kind of where we have our centers located. So those were kind of the survey results that we took into account as we built these different alternatives to study, to determine which one would be the best way to go. At the end of this presentation, we're going to hopefully have a discussion and kind of get the planning commission's recommended approach, concerns, issues. And we'll be briefing the city council on April sixteenth with the same presentation. All right, so let's dive into it. What are the alternatives? So alternative one is, of course, you always have your no action alternative. It basically assumes our current zoning and current capacity. It did provide sufficient capacity for the overall target. However, it didn't provide sufficient capacity for all the income bands. Alternative one, which was stay the course, basically takes all of the upzoning that was in our 2015 comprehensive plan and says it happens, right? It doesn't discriminate, it just says these were things that were proposed in 2015. We are going to move for, forward with all of those. It provides even more capacity than we needed. If, you know, I don't want to get into the details, I should change the slide. And alternative two has been the trend, which actually targets some rezones in the city to actually downzone some areas while still focusing growth in specific areas, specifically in the downtown, which is a countywide growth center, and in the midtown area. So let's dive into these alternatives. So as we look at the capacity numbers, the no action alternative, as you can see from both 2020, 49 for overall housing capacity, provides more than enough capacity going out to 2049, regardless of unit type. However, when you dig into the income banding, we have a deficit of four hundred and twenty three housing units in those basically less than fifty percent AMI housing targets. So we have a, we have a problem there that we can't just say our current zoning will work. We have to look at ways to change things and modify things in order to meet those targets. In the employment side, you can see we both have, we have sufficient capacity for both 2044 and 2049. So other than the income banding, we could have just kept going with our current zoning regulations, meeting all of our targets without any changings. However, because of the income banding, we did have to look at alternatives. So our first alternative is stay the course. Take the decisions the council and the, and the planning commission made in 2015 and just implement all of them now. As you can see on the map, it's kind of got a faded and a bold color. Everything that is in bold color would be a zoning change that would be made. So everything that is kind of in the purple, purplish area right here, I hope you can see my cursor, would go to downtown mixed juice. Some of that's currently zoned public facility, some of it's currently zoned C two. The Cedar View neighborhood gets upzoned to all R three, along with the, along with the properties along one ninety second. The properties along the north side of four ten get zoned to commercial C two, which is a mixed juice zone as well, so allows for housing and jobs. There's some small rezoning to higher densities around Allen York Park, and also out on the north side of the lake where there's kind of an R two area already. It would extend that R two area and kind of enlarge it. So those are all the upzones that are currently envisioned in the city's comprehensive plan that we would take. So this was all one alternative. We had to look and say, well, what would all, what would if we just did what was already in the comp plan? What would that look like? So when you get to the capacity numbers, it, everything works. We have way more capacity than we need in 2044 and way more capacity than we need going out to 2049, both for employment and housing. You can see that we have sufficient capacity for all of the housing types with actually a surplus. Anything in green means we're over by that amount, those number of housing units. The one big change that we did in both alternative one and alternative two, and it's discussed in the memo, is we didn't, we no longer assume the WSU Forest Development Agreement. Because that property, that project, that development agreement expires currently on December thirty first, 2024. And the limitations on that, that property, which were established by that, that development agreement, which is no more than six hundred and seventy two units, you have to have this mix of housing types, and it was primarily low density. Once the development agreement expires, unless the property's zoning designation has changed, it would just be a typical R three zoned property. So for both alternatives, we assume the development agreement expired because it expires at the end of the year. There's, you know. And so it would just go back to R three and what would be the capacity on vacant R three land through the buildable lands analysis? So as you can see, we have way more capacity than we need. Six hundred and fifty one housing units in the lower, in the, less than fifty percent AMI, and we have capacity across the board. This is one alternative. I don't know if it meets those policies, those survey results as much because it really changes the fundamental nature of some of the neighborhoods, and there's lots of increased zoning as part of that. So the second alternative we looked at was we said, could we meet the requirements of Vision 2050 and a regional growth strategy, which calls for the city to bend our growth rate so that we have a slower growth rate in the city of Bonnie Lake than we've had in the past? And that's the regional growth strategy. So the regional growth strategy is say, hey, we want you to slow down, we want you to have less growth in the future. We want your community to take less of that regional growth so that that regional growth occurs around transit. That was one side of the coin. The other side of the coin was, can you still meet income banding if you were to do that? Can you meet both objectives simultaneously? When you go back and look at alternative two, it meets, or alternative one, it meets the income banding, I'm sorry, my title is wrong, I was quickly doing this, you should say alternative two. The Mac is right, the title is wrong. If you look at the income band, if you look at alternative one, it really meets the income banding requirements. However, it's not as consistent with Vision 2050, which is calling for us to slow our regional growth rate, or slow our growth rate over the corresponding years. So everything here, the same thing, if it's a bolded color, it's a, it's a zoning change. So in this area, the, a lot of the, basically we eliminate the R two zone from the city and go to just R one, which would be, just be considered residential neighborhood. We, so Cedar View goes from R, from C two to C one. The areas on one ninety second go from C R two to R one. The areas on the south side of four ten go to downtown mixed juice. There are some areas around Cedar View that have a lot of critical areas that actually go to RC five. The areas behind the the new medical clinic go from R three to R one, except for Mr. Stamp's property. They go to, they go to Midtown Core because he has filed his zoning reclassification and comprehensive plan amendment to allow him to expand his business. So we honored that request in this proposal, and it's also honored in the second one as well, or the first one as well. Also, the view by vintage, that project, that property all goes to R three, which is, it's already built out of that density, so it just kind of cleans up the map. When we do that, and we make all of these changes, it works. We have capacity for housing overall between 2044 and 2049. The numbers aren't as great, but the capacity still exists. We'll still have enough capacity going out twenty five years from now if we made these changes and did nothing in the intervening time. Both for, and the employment works as well, we'll have enough employment capacity going out that far as well. On the income banding, we still provide enough capacity for all of those housing units. A hundred and seventy seven housing units surplus, so more than what is required by about two hundred housing units. We have surplus housing in the fifty to eighty, we have surplus in the, in the one twenty, below one twenty to eighty, and all the way up to over a hundred and twenty, we have capacity. Now granted, most of that capacity is in the greater one twenty, but we meet the minimum requirement of providing enough capacity by income band in all of those groups. So that brings me to the end of my presentation, and we can go back and forth through these slides as, as the planning commission has count, questions.
What's the advantages or what's the discussion on slowing our growth?
So the whole idea behind the regional growth strategy is that we're kind of at maximum road, right? Remember that concern about traffic congestion? The more housing you build on the fringe of the urban growth area, the more traffic congestion you create because there's not mass transit. And I'm not talking about like the little bucks, the little bus that runs around. True, high capacity transit, BRT, light rail, heavy rail. Years ago, going back to Vision 2040, the plan has always been at the region, for the Puget Sound region, is that we need to focus our growth in housing and employment around where we're building the infrastructure for light rail, heavy rail, and BRT. Right? So really, the place to put the housing is next to where the light, is within close proximity of the light rail so people don't have to drive as much. And then you could use buses to get them and BRT to get them places. So the regional growth strategy came up with this idea that we're going to create this tiering group of cities. Metropolitan cities, core cities, high capacity transit communities, cities and towns, and an unincorporated urban growth area of the county. The last two categories are supposed to take the lowest, lowest amount of growth. Like I said, cities and towns for Pierce County, seven percent as a combined group. The cities that are in that group are Edgewood, us, Wilkinson, South Prairie, Carbonado, and Pacific. Nope. I think Pacific maybe too is in that group. Where as a group are supposed to take only seven percent of the growth as a, as a, as a conglomerate? Because we don't have transit, so every time we build more housing, we're just putting more cars on the road. That's why the visional strategy is for us to slow that growth rate down so that we're not doing huge growth jumps every year, adding huge amounts of transit, transportation to the road. The income banding from the Commerce really, and this is the difference between the region, what we have to do with the region and the state. Puget Sound Regional Council is kind of a negotiated agreement between Pierce County, St. Helmut County, King County, and Kitsap County. And it differentiates, which I think correctly, between Seattle and South Prairie, right? Those are very different cities. The Growth Management Act does not differentiate between Seattle and South Prairie. They're both cities, they're both urban. And so there's not this differentiation in the nature of the cities. So when they're looking at the requirements of the Growth Management Act, South Prairie, Seattle from growth have the same requirement. It's the amount that's different, but that's controlled by that regional growth strategy that we have implemented, which is why our numbers for total still work, it's just how they get spread over the income bands. Does that answer the question?
Yeah, what's the chances of getting any transit? I don't think we're anywhere on the list.
We're not, so yeah, so getting some transit that might provide some local service, maybe someday in the future. You know, Pierce Transit may come back out here. That would require a vote of the Bonnie Lake population to rejoin the district. But that still wouldn't be BRT or light rail or heavy rail. And really to change your growth projections and your growth numbers, you're really going to want to have that transit that moves without having to deal with cars, right? Like the light rail has with right of way, the heavy rail has the right of way. Sumner has to take significantly more growth than we do because of the Sumner Sounder Station. And so the, the ideal is build the populations where the transit is. Getting BRT or light rail out here, probably not in my lifetime. I'll say, I'll never say never because who knows what's going to happen a hundred years from now, but while I'm being a planner, and I got fourteen years left, I don't see it happening in fourteen years.
Isn't Sumner about built out for housing?
They have to start upzoning. See, that's, that's the difference between the two cities. Cities that were required to take more capacity have to then start identifying areas of the city where they're going to add higher density, more density in order to, to achieve those unit counts that they're required to achieve.
I like alternative two just because I like the idea of turning that downtown core into multi-unit. We talked about it at council when we were meeting together about like the idea of having like apartments above and businesses below, and because it makes sense that it's in the area where there's transit, because we have the park and ride right across the street, it just makes sense to have more density there than spread out among the city.
I have stores on one level and a station on the next level.
Yeah, or some, yeah, something like that. But I like the idea of having it where the transit is instead of spread out through the whole city and rezoning tons of areas. Then we can rezone smaller areas and get a lot more impact.
Yeah, under alternative two, we do do some upzoning in the downtown area where there's some areas that were C two that would go to R three. The big difference though between alternative one and alternative two as it relates to downtown is the city property stays public facility. And the reason is, is because right now there's an amendment going through the city council process to take some of the improvements that were supposed to go at Midtown Park, like the community center and some of those, and move those to create a downtown park. So we have another kind of community park in the, in the, in the area on the concert side so we can add more sports fields at Midtown Park. So when you do that, and also looking at how we use the police station and work with the fire department, we wanted to say if we had to keep all that for public facilities, for community, the community center, the community garden, the possibly a library, bring the senior center, a plaza, you know, a veteran memorial, how could we do that in downtown? It would be in our kind of civic campus area, which means you wouldn't have housing there. So it wouldn't have as much housing in downtown, but we would still have a lot of housing. And I think in next week, you're going to get a briefing on the, or the next planning commission meeting on kind of where we're at from a number standpoint. And I think some of our, our downtown, from what they call activity units, is actually higher than some of them in Puyallup. So I just want to point that out that there's, there's a slight differentiation of how that city property gets used.
Sounds good.
What's the status on the park and ride? Will that continue indefinitely?
It's owned by Sound Transit, and it's there to provide transit service between Bonnie Lake and the transit station. I have not heard of any rumors that it would be cut or changed in the future. So we would still have some limited transit in downtown. I, I hope to keep it there and maybe try to work with them to see if we can drag the bus a little bit further down four ten to maybe provide some linkages between the industrial area and the park and ride. Don't know if Sound Transit would go for it, but I want to get the industrial area built first, but I have not heard it's going away.
What about annexation?
The annexation really doesn't change our overall number because those housing units are still there. The, the annexations that we're looking at are still, you know, going down to a hundred and twelfth at some point in the future. But, and also kind of the filling out around Rhodes Lake Road, the north side of Rhodes Lake Road. Windows will actually be occurring, to be honest, would probably be around twenty thirty. Because I keep trying to push the state OFM to allow us to rely on the decennial census, and since we're already so far from the last decennial census, it wouldn't happen until the next decennial census. Because right now, when you do an annexation, you have to do a door to door census. And even if, right now, even if we were to do it in conjunction with annexing at the time of a decennial census, we would still have to go, if they did a decennial census on Monday, we would have to go out and do it ourselves on Tuesday because it requires us to do it, we can't rely on the federal census. So I've been fighting with OFM for twelve years on this thing, and I'm waiting, and I'm trying to make ground, and hopefully one day we will be successful. So that, that, those annexations plus, once we, once our population crosses twenty five thousand people, there's a whole bunch of new requirements that we have to take on. So the annexation would not occur. So the annexation would not occur until after we hit 25,000 people. Um, which we, we still believe is like, you know, three or four or five years from now. The only annexation I see occurring in a short term is between 96th and the current city boundaries out in East Town. If that comprehensive plan amendment is approved by the county as part of this. Cycle. I'm not sure if it will be, but that's what we're waiting on. And we would, we would move quick to annex that because it's a smaller area. And bring that area into the city. Want to hear what the planning commission thinks? So I can at least say this is what the planning commission said to the council.
Yeah.
I'm going to concur with Commissioner Binion. So many years ago, when we started the design commission. The vision that we always had for the downtown core was for it to be a multi-use. Um, and perhaps have senior housing along with daycare type environments as well as retail environments. A very walkable solution for folks though, so that would have more of a small town feel much like Sumner, for example. And, um, you know, at the time, because there were, all those parcels were owned by so many different people and the opportunity for the. City to actually be able to take those on was pretty slow. But like you, I, I see the vision, um, you know, especially as we have a lot more baby boomers who are perhaps looking for more of a. A cottage feel, for example, or a bungalow feel, something that's a smaller housing, but closer to resources. We have an awful lot of medical clinics in our area. One of the things that, you know, you were talking about the transit, the nice thing would be is even if it just went from. The top of the hill to our boundaries at 234th, just allow people to be able to get back and forth with. You know, whether it be medical appointments, whether it be grocery shopping, whether it be get a coffee or a sandwich, you know, to be able to have that kind of a. You know, little shuttle type thing that just went on 410, you know, that just give that gave people the opportunity. Um, and especially since, you know, I see a lot of folks that live at the view who are, you know, trunking along the 410 with all these groceries and these bags of things that they've got from. Like Fred Meyer or something. And it's a safety issue, especially in the winter time when, you know, I see them and it's dark and it's five o'clock and it's pretty miserable out. Um, you know, because many of them have limited opportunities for their own transportation, they're, they're having to walk or bicycle. And so, you know, one of the visions I'd like to see, if it's ever an opportunity is to have some kind of a shuttle. System that would allow, at least from border to border, that would allow our folks to be able to, to, you know, get where they needed to go. But. The second one, when I read it, you know, it, it fit the vision of what we had. Is that 20 years ago, um, when I first started with design commission and we're looking at that. So. That's my two bits on it.
Yeah, I would say I agree with the, the second alternative as well. Just, just for the share point of, you know, we. We start adding more people. It's going to add more congestion to the roads and. Right now, if we slow that down, I think that's going to be ultimately better. So we can. Catch the infrastructure as far as the roads go. Catch that up with the growth before that growth happens. Uh, otherwise we're going to be stuck like South Hill and some of the areas that we see that didn't plan ahead like that.
Recall, we had a cottage ordinance at one time, but it lapsed.
Yeah. And we would look back in that to about. You know, adding, you know, how do we deal with cottage housing? You know, we will have to look at the, the. Quote unquote, the residential neighborhood zoning. And look at how we provide those other housing types that people are looking for, the townhouses, the cottages. ADUs is already kind of addressed. So it's really, you know, how do we provide townhouses and. ADU cottages. In a way that doesn't really change it from being what the residential neighborhoods are already. How do they kind of fit within that? Uh, and that's just work that we would have to do.
So is there a consensus on the. Second option? Option two.
Option two been the trend. I messed up. I'll fix that before we go to council.
That it?
That is it unless there's any questions, concerns.
The order.
Oh, I will say one thing before we move on. I apologize Chair Solomon. I will say, I think we're going to break Commerce's mind. Because this is not supposed to happen. Right? Like the, the fact that you could downzone parts of the city and still make it work is not. What people think the outcome of all this is going to be. It's, it's atypical and I'll be honest, when I told the consultants, this is what I wanted to do. I could hear him chuckling on the other side of the phone, um, because they didn't think it would work. And then when we ran all the numbers. And it worked because I didn't do the, I didn't do the math. I turned it over to independent third party consultant for them to do the numbers. And when they ran the numbers and it came back and it worked. They were like, uh, it's not supposed to. But it did. And so. You know, I, I think it's the way to go, right? I think it just, it hits both objectives. And stays true to kind of what the city is wanting us to do, uh, going forward. So. More to come. We'll see what happens as we turn these things out to, to the public and the Department of Commerce, but that, that's kind of where we're at. So with that, I'm done.
Correspondence.
There is none.
Staff comments.
Um, I, I do have a few staff comments. One, we will be taking the motion to appoint. Chair Solomon and Commissioner Shoss Boyd to the city council next Tuesday night. There's also a new individual that is also being appointed, but we will still be short one. From the. The cap, the commission. So if you know of anybody. I'm also, I will be also talking to people who put their name in to run for, to get appointed to the city council. And if there's more than one and there's not people who are not selected, I might ask them if they want to be on the planning commission instead. So we'll see kind of how that.
That, uh, has gotten us a couple of people.
Yep. So we'll see how that kind of plays out and, um, wanted to let you know that those are going forward. So we will be able to meet on the 17th. We should have six commissioners on that night. We'll still be vacant that seventh one. Um, but I think we gotta keep moving. Uh, also on the staffing side, uh, Mehdi Brazel was put into an, a. Out of class status as a senior planner, um, and has taken, taken over the comprehensive plan.
Oh, okay.
So she's currently an associate planner that I have asked to step up and basically sho-. Shoulder the burden of running the planning division while I serve in my interim role and also taking on a burden of. Doing the comprehensive plan work. So you will start to see Mehdi and more and more planning commissions as she does the briefings. Uh, on those different elements of the comprehensive plan. She's basically doing the community development element, which is the housing, the land use. She's doing the environmental stewardship element, the implementation element. Am I forgetting any one of them, Kennedy? That's the ones you guys are working on primarily. And Kennedy, Kennedy and Mehdi are basically running the show in my absence. In my metaphorical absence as the development services manager. Uh, but yeah, and then next week you, at the, at the March, I'm sorry, the April 17th. Planning Commission meeting, you'll get a briefing on kind of the first. Chunk of the community development element. We decided to break it into smaller pieces. Cause we figured it's better to focus on smaller pieces than bring you a five, you know, a 50-page element. So you will see kind of the, the background data. You're going to see the annexation discussion and also the discussion on property rights. And then we're just going to start moving through the different. Sections of that. Up, up next after that would be housing. And then we'll move on to the different elements there. Um, we are combining the economic vitality element into the community development element because there's a lot of overlap. So that will be part of it as well.
And we got the. List of members updated. I was sorry, we had Huber on it still.
Yes, we will, we will get all that updated.
Thank you.
And then, uh, the last thing, just for your calendar, we will be doing public outreach this summer at Toons for Taps and Bonnie Lake Days. So we're hoping that the planning commission will once again rally and support that. We may have to have planning commission meetings during that time period as well. So there might be ones that you're not available to go to. And we'll be, we'll kind of be sending staff there and here. We sat down and wrote our calendars for get this comp plan done and. It scared all of us because we still have to be done by the end of the year and we're months behind. Because of everything that happened. So we all kind of shook hands and agreed that we would get this done, whatever it took. Kennedy took the first hit and stayed late on Friday night to get the packet done because we were late getting it back from the consultant. So my hat's off to Kennedy. Uh, for doing that. Um, so we all kind of bounded together and said, we're going to get it done, whatever it takes. Uh, so we may have some staff here doing meetings and then other staff members out of the park doing. Public outreach on those nights. So.
Self-reach was very rewarding.
Yes. And we'll get you out there as many times as we can. I just wanted to give you that heads up that there might be times where you're here on a tune for tack night based on. What we, where we're at in the process. And it might be me and Kennedy here. It might be me and Betty here and Kennedy out there. But we, we, we're just going to roll as a team and get it done. With that, I can answer any questions if the commission has them.
Commissioner comments. Brad, you had something.
Yeah. Well, I've got two actually. Um, first one was that, that screen flashing like that is so annoying.
I agree.
The second one.
It just started happening today, honestly. So I will find out what happened.
So my second one, uh, was, um, so I've really got a problem with the parking. Pete parking down there at Allen York Park, um. You know, and I, I just, you know, I, I watched the, uh, meeting and it just seemed like it just popped up kind of out of nowhere, um, that all of a sudden, uh. You know, I, I was kind of thinking we're, we're supposed to be like the park board now because there's a park commission. There's no park commission anymore. Our committee. And so, I mean, you know, but we didn't know anything about it until, you know, they said it was happening.
Yeah. I, I wasn't, I agreed. It was something that was being done by Ryan and, and, and the previous, you know, previous administration. And kind of everything got put into place and I was just kind of left to implement it. The theory behind it is one. We need to balance. Providing access to the park with also overcapacity at the park. It, it's a fine balance between the two. Um, the big challenge we have is. It's absolutely free to go to Allen York Park. You have to pay to go to North County Park. So. We take kind of, we're trying to balance those scales so that we don't have the same. Brunt that we did last year from issues. Um, I will say the way, the, the way that we wrote. The implementation side of it is that any of the money raised from the parking at the park. Will be put right into the park CIP for park improvement projects. So it's not a, it's not a way of trying to raise funds for the general fund. It's. Goes to sports, to parks. They did, they looked at a number of. Other parks in the region. To see what they did when it comes to waterland parks and they looked at like American Lake. Uh, Saltwater State Park, the, uh, road, uh, the two parks in Des Moines, uh, Redondo. And the Marina, um, and every one of them are charging for parking as a way of trying to. One, balance the capacity versus desirability and also two, as a way of providing. A source of funds for the park itself. And it's. Quite similarly to those, it's $4 for four hours or $10 for all day. And it's only May 1st through October 31st. On big community nights like Toons at Taps, Bonnie Lake Days. All those signs get basically bagged and there's, it does not require a park when there's community events. Try, as once again, try to balance those two things. I don't disagree with your statement that as the parks board, you should have been more informed. Um, and that's why when Sadie was doing her stuff, I was like, we gotta go to the parks board. So I can say going forward, there's a definitely a commitment. On my side to make sure you are informed. That's why we took their Allen York Security Park Plan to the planning commission for your feedback. So I don't disagree with how you're feeling. Um, I would concur that I don't think you guys were included as much as you should have been. And all I can say is sorry for that. And that, that from my level, I have a commitment to make sure you're involved. But that's the reason why it's coming out. We're trying to balance the desirability with Allen York Park. But also trying to combat the. Let's say this. The image of Allen York Park where the residents don't let their kids go. Right? So you've got kind of this dueling nature of it being so popular. That it's attracting people from around the region, but the people who live in the city don't send their kid, don't let their kids go to that park during the summer. And so we're trying to, for lack of a better word, take the park back for the residents of Bonnie Lake. And let them feel that there's a, a safe and secure place where they can go.
Does that include enforcement?
Yeah. So that's why we did the Allen York Park Plan. There will be, there will be off duty, there will be police officers patrolling the park. We were out there, we, we've, if you go out there, there's been some vegetation management changes. So like around the playground, we took out every other bush so that you could actually see into the playground. We cleaned up the ivy that was kind of on the gravel shoulder. We were, we were out there today with the police department, walking through the trail network. Because it's also a, there's also a utility wrote through there for our stormwater of our sewer line. Um, and we're going to work and do some vegetation management there so that the police officers can drive down that utility corridor. To provide some security to the trails in the wooded area. They're going to be out there doing enforcement through the summer. There'll be police officers out there. There were not police officers out there last year. Um, we're also changing some of where the parking is painted. So it's emergency parking. So the police have a place to park or. Uh, emergency ambulance have a place to park. So there's definitely kind of a full. Press on the security side to make it. As enjoyable as. A park can be. Is it perfect? No. Are there going to be challenges? Yes. Are there things that are going to be changed in the future? Yes. Are there things that are success, going to be successful? Yeah. Are there things that could be failure? Yeah. The whole idea was that we would put a plan together based on everything we've ever, we know about the park, the, all the problems we're having. And then we, we're still meeting every week and we will continue to meet every week as a group. So the, there's this. Kind of an ad hoc staff committee that I pulled together that consists of myself, uh, the police chief or one of the assistant police chiefs. David Wells, who does all the special events, Chuck McEwen, who's our risk manager, Leslie Harris, who's our PIO, uh, myself. People from the operations side who does, do all the park maintenance. Regine, who is our emergency management opera, management, emergency management coordinator. And so we meet every week to talk about Allen York Park. We got to the first hurdle, which was the base plan. And now we're, we're still talking about. Implementation and how we tweak and modify things out there to make it as. Operationally the best we can. It's changed though, and people are going to be upset because the things that they normally used to do, they can't do. You know, we're kind of modifying the gravel loop around the old city hall site to kind of take control of that area. So it's change. I'm not expecting everybody's going to be happy with every change. But our metric is where there are less fights, where there's shot call, you know, gunshot calls fire. Where people using Allen York Park is the place to, hey, we live in Fife and Tacoma. We need to meet up for a place to have a big fight. Let's go to Allen York Park. Which was what was happening last year. Um, and so those are the kind of metrics we're using to hopefully get it back. So that. If you live around Allen York Park, you don't mind if your son or daughter. Is running down to the park to play.
It would make sense to kind of schedule a little update. On the agenda. A little spot, you know, hey, is the update on the park and what's going on?
I think we could probably do one in the May meeting. I, you know, we, we, we're, we're, we're working on an update right now where we're at, where implementation is concerned. Um, and we can, we can, we can definitely. We can definitely get that scheduled either in April or May. I'll see what kind of where we're at on the calendar. And we're going to continue to meet throughout the end of the year and then we will get together at the end of the year as a. And we're gonna continue to meet throughout the end of the year and then we will get together at the end of the year as a group, talk about what went well, talk about what didn't go well. And as part of that, we'll be updating the plan. And as we update the plan, we'll change it for next year based on what we learned.
Yeah, so two things. So first off, the consistency is really important. My sister and her husband live down in Redondo. And we're part of the paid parking is. But once the, once there's pressure that's let off. It's, it's pretty gnarly down there sometimes. And they do have neighborhood patrols that will go and pick up all the liquor bottles and all the other garbage that's in that parking lot. Where people will park without paying because they sit in their cars. The other thing is, is that, as many of you know, Saturday night, Lowe's parking lot was the new Safeway from Enham Claw. And there was a big, we'll call it a car rally. And this, so, you know, what we're experiencing is kind of this bulge of, you know, people are being displaced from one location to another. And, you know, I live off of Angeline and I have to tell you, houses all closed up and all night long. And you guys can probably. It's racing cars all night long. And again, you know, somebody impaled themselves, their truck on the guardrail down there by Victor Falls. And so, you know, we're, it's, it's one of those situations where I think the activities that you're describing, Jason, you know, for Allen York are terrific. But that activity will go somewhere.
Yep.
And, and how do we then deal constructively with that activity? And so, I mean, again, we experienced it on, I mean, there was neighborhood things were just lit up on Saturday night about what was going on up at Lowe's. So, you know, I, I understand that there's a need. I, I just don't know what the solution is. And so, you know.
It's, it's just a constant problem of crisis management. I mean, you're never going to.
No, you're not gonna eliminate it, but how do you mitigate it?
Yeah, how do you mitigate it? And I, and I think, you know, that, you know, I can talk to the chief and, and, but I'm sure the chief is well aware of.
Oh, I, absolutely. And, and, you know, again, some of the neighborhood things said that, you know, the Bonnie Lake Police Department had been up there and, and stuff. And so, I mean, they'll scatter and then they come back and then they're racing up and down the side streets and. You know, I have a friend who said, you know, after about ten o'clock at night, he doesn't let his kids drive in Bonnie Lake. Just he's too afraid of, of the craziness that's going on. So, you know, that's not the community we want to live in. And, and how do you, again, how do we mitigate that? How do we get that?
Right.
Because most of these guys were the guys that came from the Enham Claw Safeway, you know, and they sit out there and it's, you know, I, I've shopped at that Safeway that night. I've never felt. Endangered. But there's a lot of cars and a lot of guys and, you know, they're having, they're drinking beer and having fun and. It is what it is. So I, I, I'm not saying that I, there's certainly not an answer. I just think that we have to be conscious of. When we're doing such a constructive effort at Allen York, where does all that activity go?
Right. I, I will say most of what we were getting last year was more out of like. Because when the police would go up there and have to deal with it, people, it was like Tacoma, Federal Way.
Right.
I mean, pretty far trips. And so, yeah, it's, it's a constant management issue. Yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
You got on that so far? Anything else? Motion to adjourn.
I'm moved.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those guys have it, we're adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, Jason.